Look at that, it's six o'clock right now. Good evening, six o'clock, this is Robert Stevenson. I'm going to call to order the Suffolk County Brando Regional School District School Committee meeting for the 21st of June. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So, second.
Can I get a show of hands to open the meeting? You know, let the record show the motion passes six, zero, zero. All right, can I get a room stand for a question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we've got Lawrence going around, and I think actually we're all done with correspondence. Superintendent Willard, you think we have something, right?
I do, I received a lovely but sad email from Trooper Kanata, who has worked with us for the past six years on our safety team. And I just want to read you a little bit of what he wrote. He said, "I hope all is well. I want to say thank you for all your assistance and support over the years. He's been, I've been assigned to assist with school safety with emergency planning endeavors matters in communities throughout Western Mass for the past 16 years along with my other assignments. It was an honor and an absolute pleasure to be invited to, in to assist the STG RSD and the Southway Police Department with the in-depth this endeavor to help keep everyone involved safe. As a collective group with the schools and the involved emergency planning partners, we have accomplished many things together to help foster and ensure a safe learning environment for all students and staff. We have experiences on enhanced lockdowns, shelter in place, evacuation, reunification, stop the bleed, and on developing crisis teams to name few shared achievements for all to be aligned with this very valuable endeavor. It was a very collaborative process with many staff from the school district involved. I would also like to specifically like to recognize the talented efforts of Sergeant Michael Taggart, who initially led and organized a district safety team with all the involved planning partners in both calm and stormy waters, with achieving its goals to much success, as well as the efforts of administrative assistant Amy McLaughlin and SRO Kyle Sanders, Southway Police Department for all their tireless hard work, both out in front of this effort as well as behind the scenes to help keep this endeavor moving forward. But other line I would just like to say is that he continues to go, continue to compliment us, but he says, "As you all well know, we further invited several neighboring school districts up to the STG RSD trainings and drills to share the knowledge gleaned through this collective effort with others to be able to enhance their own planning efforts. So, we were very fortunate to work with Trooper Kanata. We are an exemplar across the state on our safety procedures and all the different lockdowns and drills we have done. So, he will be missed. He does have another person who will be taking his role and we will be in touch with that person shortly to continue our work this upcoming year. He got another job in another division.
That is a good guy. So, we're having another training this fall, correct?
We're gonna have lots of trainings, but we have our first one scheduled in October, I believe.
And Amy, don't move that slide yet, I missed something, I'm gonna go back and deal with the minutes, I skipped right over that, sorry. We have our minutes from our meeting from June the 7th, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Any questions on the minute? All right, can you show a hands to accept the minutes? Can you look, record show motion passes six, zero, zero. All right, now back to our first public comment section, if anybody here in attendance would like to make a comment, they certainly can do that. Just ask you to speak in a, or lift. Okay, fantastic, so, on a page two, student advisory report. Well, I don't know, they're all out of school, so I thought we'd have somebody here eager, but no, that's fine, they're all out for the year. We're gonna move on to educational presentation, we have a couple tonight. First, I'm gonna call up Rob Dunne, Director of Special Education.
So, I have, Amy has given you guys the PowerPoint presentation that I reviewed, and I gathered that there were some questions about sub separate programs, and so the PowerPoint I prepared talks about all of our sub separate programs as, in addition to some that we have had earlier recently. So, a sub separate, substantially separate classroom is another word for it, or word for itself, classroom. It is for students who, it really varies based on the needs of the students, but it's, it's often pushed between need of modified curriculum, smaller class size, lower students teacher ratio, I can get into more details when I talk about them classrooms themselves. I and my staff focus a lot on the fact that this is not a, any of these substantially separate programs are not intended for students to stay there all the time, all day for extended period of time, as I said in my last, in my second bullet on this page, as they're able and as it benefits them, we get them out with their, with their. So, one question was the substantially separate classrooms, the number has, has increased and we've proposed more for this coming year. And as some of you may recall that there used to be substantially separate classrooms in all three buildings. When I first started, I had this, this was twelve years ago, that was the last year of the stepping stones program in Woodland. Then there was the crossroads and journey programs here, and then there was crossroads, and I'm not even sure the pathways was up at the high school at that point, I think it was when the grades switched, the need switched. So, part of it was the reconfiguration of the buildings and the ages of the students. Also, we didn't have students who need that level of need, but the pandemic is swinging back, and now we do. As I said, the pandemic didn't cause disabilities, but it sure didn't do any harm. Good, for those who are struggling. The first program is the integrated preschool, it's been here for a long time, very well established. It is, it includes students with special needs as well as peer partners. So, the students with special needs learn right along with their peer partners. As I said, very well established, kids can start there when they're three. We get the majority of our students from early intervention, although we have had quite a few who have moved into the district and just contacted us directly.
What's your ratio in that program of special education students to peer models?
It is eight, it's about eight to seven students with special needs to peer models. The, in the last year, we had a waiver because we didn't have, the, the ratio was off, which it was across the state. And so, this year, we've gotten back closer to where we'd like to be.
Which is where?
Is, is the eight to seven, yeah.
Almost what, I, I guess, I guess there's the silly question, why not go one to one?
I think that we can, but we also, I think that that is really the, the numbers of students has dictated that. So, I think that we, the best size is 15 students in a classroom, because there's one teacher and there's, and there's a teaching assistant generally in the classroom. This next project program, the autism program is a, is a program that will begin next year.
Okay, so this is new.
This is new, yeah, this one is new, this is sort of the old stepping stones, if you will. As I said, this is, so this is for students with autism spectrum disorder diagnosis. And it will be, the program will be overseen by the BCBA and a special educational teacher and supported by all of our service providers, as well as paraprofessionals. What we have found is that there are, we just recently have a number of children who need discrete trials, which is, is applied behavior analysis, it's a form of teaching, and it's very repetitive, very repetitive, and goes right down to the very basics of, of skills. And so, these children, in order to learn, this is the best way to teach them, and it's, it's labor intensive and time intensive. And so, these guys are gonna be in this classroom for those discrete trials, and as I said, we'll, we'll get them out with your peers as much as we can.
And how are these students identified?
These, great question, so, the, and, and I will say that for privacy purposes, I am not going to talk too much specifics, because our, our, our school is, our district is so small and our programs are so small. So, these are students who have an autism diagnosis, they also really struggle with language. So, it's another piece of what they'll do is language acquisition, you know, they, they may have some language, but they really need help developing more and, and effectively communicate.
What's a BCBA?
A BCBA is a certified behavior analyst, anyone didn't account for all of the acronyms. That's what it is.
Okay.
Certified behavior analyst, thank you, board certified, behavior analyst. We have two in the district right now, Anne Marie Sherpa is at Woodland and Shannon Kavanaugh is here. The next program is also new, this will be both at Woodland, there will be a program at Woodland and another program at Powder Mill. And to your question, Pam, about, you know, how are students chosen for this program? This one gets a little bit trickier in terms of what their diagnosis might be, but there's an entrance criteria that is in part based on their diagnosis, so they might have an emotional disability. I, I put ADHD here because, because it's part of our program, but the second part of that is the most important piece, where I wrote, "These students have a longstanding documented history of exhibiting significant emotional dysregulation that has been disruptive to their learning despite having received behavioral interventions and therapeutic support in a less restricted environment." So, I don't want anyone to see this description and think, "My child is, has ADHD, they're going to be a substantially separate program." No, that, that second piece has got to be a, a part of it. And as it says, "The difficulties displayed must be the direct result of a disability." The behavior specialist, the BCBA, and an adjustment counselor will also take part in this, supporting this program, as will the OT and the PT, and I didn't write, but the SOP, the speech language pathology is what also.
And approximately how many students can this service at a time?
What we're going to have at this point is three to four children in each program at each school. Right now, we will have the special education teacher and a paraprofessional with support from the BCBA. So, it's, it's hard to say how many students they can support, because it's so, it's so much based on the needs of the kids, but, but as we, as we are planning for next year, that's what it looks like at both schools.
And so, it's three to four mixed grade levels?
Yes, yes.
All within the 48 month, when, you have to do it within 48 months.
So.
You can only have a self-contained classroom within 48 months difference between their birth dates.
Oh, okay, so at what point, so sort of following up on Pam's question, you, we've got three to four kids in each school. We've got the staff to be able to do that. How many kids, where does it get to a point where, like, okay, we need staffing, is it eight kids in each school, 12 kids?
Is there like a role?
Like, I'm assuming at a certain point, you're gonna wave a white flag and talk to Jen and say, "Look, we've got, this is too many kids for this program, we need either additional support or..."
So, my hope would be that if we can be successful in meeting the needs of these kids, that we can move them on. So, when we're talking about, when we're talking about inclusion, right, we talk about full inclusion, partial inclusion, and substantially separate. What we're talking about for these students is substantially separate.
Yeah.
And my, my hope and my expectation would be that with the work that, that our staff do with outside providers, that we would eventually be able to move those students to, to partial inclusion, and then perhaps to full inclusion, I don't know. So, I don't mean to suggest that I'm dodging your question by any means, I guess I just, it's so much based on the, the population at the time. If we reached a critical number, yes, we would have to.
I know, but how do you figure that out? Like, you've got three to four now.
Yeah.
I understand that you want to move them through, and that makes perfect sense, you don't want to keep them there, that's great. But, and if that's the case, you could theoretically be able to help more kids with the same amount of staff because you're moving kids through, but, but if.
It differs from year to year.
Okay, no, no, it's fine.
Children to children, children.
So, you could have three to four kids that require a lot of help, and then you're full, or you could have eight because they don't really require a lot of help, and okay.
Exactly, exactly, yes, and the, the challenge is always our, our families that move in, that, you know, we're just, um.
Yeah, you don't, you don't listen to.
Or the kindergarten group, you just don't know yet, because they got evaluated for such a short period of time.
So, yes, so that's the social emotional support classrooms at both Woodland and Powder Mill, they were, they will both be named. They are not named yet, we'll have the teachers do that. The Odyssey program is a program new to Powder Mill this year, this, this year, so I, the room's right there, it's amazing. These students are, have mixed disabilities and require a significant amount of modification, social emotional support. And they are in this classroom with a special education teacher and two or three paraprofessionals, also with support from the BCBA, the OT. So, that classroom right now has four students.
Again, mixed grade levels?
For now, there, it's all third grade.
Okay.
Yeah, I, thinking about the population that's coming up to us, I don't anticipate any more students going in there at the start of the year, but we'll sort of evaluate as we, as we go. Yes, but it, but potentially to be in the grade. The Crossroads one and two programs, the Crossroads two program is also called A program. This has had many, many faces in the years, over the years. When I first started, it was very much labeled as a behavior program. We have moved away from that, it's no longer, the needs of our students no longer necessitate that in this setting. The classrooms are run by Catherine Zoubo and Morgan Evol. They focus on independence, they move the kids out into the, the general classroom as much as they can. Shannon Dion supports the Crossroads program, Lisa Sigga supports the A program. So, these, these two are very well established programs. This year, actually, the Crossroads one program with Catherine will have seventh to eighth graders, which is a change. Morgan will have ninth through 12th graders, it's a change just in the last, again, this is where things shift, right? So, the numbers are such that the ninth graders really need to move to Morgan. Whereas before Catherine was able to teach seventh through ninth graders, but now the numbers are such that we need to make that shift.
Gotcha, so Crossroads one is now seventh to eighth graders, Crossroads two is now high schools, okay. Now, is there, like, of the previous programs that came before, at the younger levels, is there a group of students that are most likely to feed, like, is there a program at either Powder Mill or Woodland that most likely feeds into the Crossroads program?
I would say that, though not specifically, it's given the current makeup of our, of our Crossroads program that the students in our social emotional support classrooms
Okay.
will probably go there, but these are kids of, these are kids who can do the academic work. We have, we have some students, another piece for us is language-based learning disabilities, right? So, so we have kids who are sort of co-hormons, right? So, they, they might have language-based learning disabilities as well as some social emotional needs. It's unlikely that the students, but I don't know, it's unlikely that the students in the autism program at Woodland would eventually filter out, they're probably more likely to be Pathways students.
Okay.
And that brings us to the last one, which is Pathways. This is run by Judy Bean. We will this year have to apply for a waiver because of the age range, we now are at, I think, 13 and 18, so we've just gone outside the 48 months, so we will apply for a waiver, my understanding is that that was not a big deal, but we will, we will do it. And the focus here is on life skills acquisition and transition, community-based education. Judy does a terrific job. There are, there is one student who graduated and will stay with the program until he's 22. And then there are some others in the pipeline who may well go, as I mentioned, the basic program at Wesley. So, it's a, and then Judy also helps with the referrals to DBS or MRC for all of our students, she's the transition coordinator. And then my last note was just about our, our students and our population. According to the radar data from GESI, we have 1,265 students in the district. The number of students not pre-K are 205, 216 total. Pre-K is counted in a different way, so we're, so I just decided to put that in. And that.
I have an inclusion question, not substantially separate, but with regard to what inclusion looks like at both Powder Mill and Woodland. Are, are students included, like, I know that we have multiple grades for multiple classrooms within each grade. So, are, do, are all classrooms inclusion classrooms, or do you tend to take your special education students and put them with a special education teacher in one or two inclusion classes? And not the other? Right, exactly, do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
I do.
Yeah, do you spread them out or do you keep them together in one or two classes?
Yes, we, we spread them out.
Okay.
We spread them out, yes.
And am I correct that you have one special education teacher per grade level?
Except for K-4. Yes, the, the numbers are such that there, Allison Van Narski is the first grade special education teacher, Heather Bourbonnet is the second grade, and they share kindergarten. The, the advantage of these two programs starting at Woodland is that this special, the autism special education teacher will be responsible for some of those students and the social emotional support classroom responsible for others. So, so their caseloads are, are good, they're not too heavy now, but they'll be, but they'll be better once we, once we pull some of those.
And they can adequately service all of them, even though they're spread amongst different classrooms?
Yes, yes.
Is it fair to say that the, that the kids that are in the, the Odyssey program, from what you're describing, they require more intervention, more teachers in the classroom? Do they, as they get older, or do they go into that Pathways program?
That is most likely.
Okay. I was just wondering whether that, because you said right now it's only third graders
Yes.
in with that group, so we've got a specialized group.
Yeah.
Is, obviously next year will be fourth graders and then fifth graders and sixth graders, so they'll be able to go into that Pathways program?
Yes.
Okay. Super, and just to clarify, the reason that I asked Superintendent Willard to have you come tonight was not really a, this overarching question of, of what was breaking down, but it was sort of more of a, when we had the discussion, I thought it would be a great idea on an annual basis for you to be able to come to the school committee, give us an update.
Of course.
Because I had not yet, over this year that I've been on, had met you. And I think it's just a, a great idea that since you're running this whole program for us, and they're doing such a great job, if you could sort of come in on an annual basis at the end of the year to give us an update as how things are going, what things are coming up that are new, and that way everybody's sort of informed and, and up to date, and we have one or two people online and anybody that shows up.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you very much, yeah, wasn't an issue that was going on that we wanted you to come in, we really just want to get some more information.
Well, and I think that, I, I appreciate that, I think that the increase in the sub separate is a, is a great place to start because it describes our, our district, so I'm, so I'm happy to do that.
Fantastic, thank you very much, thank you so much. All right, so, now, we have a 504 update, Jennifer Yellen.
I'll just come up here too.
First of all, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We've heard lots of great things, which is again why I asked superintendent to see if you could come in and give us an update just to let us know all the great and wonderful things that you're sort of accomplishing up there.
Awesome, well, thanks to me, all of you, I'm alone, I was speaking in front of people, so I wrote it out, but I'll do my best to make eye contact.
Do you have any challenges? We think we have, we have a really good 504 coordinator here.
Yeah, I'll write myself. Well, I want to start by thanking you guys for giving me the opportunity to be an STGRC staff member. For those of you that don't know me and all my siblings, I'm, back there, we all went through the school of this. So, I thoroughly enjoy giving back to the school system because it helped me grow into the person I am today. My first year taking on the role as the district 504 coordinator, providing me with the knowledge and experience moving forward to mold this position as efficient, productive, and supportive as possible. So, one of my biggest goals was to create consistent structure and expectations of what these plans will consist of moving forward. The priority was ensuring database compliance to begin with. I successfully held 216 meetings this year to make sure every single student's 504 plan is accurate, up to date, and consisted of manageable and realistic accommodations to support them to the best of our ability. Creating a unified process and timelines for students going through the initial evaluation, holding annuals for every student with an existing plan, conducting revision or reconvene meetings due to new or concerning information, and bringing students through the process of the three-year reevaluation recommendation with something that set precedent in ensuring that compliance. I also created a unilateral language of accommodations so that these plans are easily transferable from each grade level, from building to building, allowing things as clear, concise, and appropriate and applicable as possible for teachers and need-to-know staff to understand and implement. Something you'll learn about is I'm strongly opposed to just writing the plan, getting it signed, and passing it off and saying, "Here you go, now do this kind of document." I've made myself readily available for teachers and other need-to-know staff members to ask questions, provide feedback, and follow through to make clear expectations of these accommodations being implemented to support these students. In addition, I created a survey for teachers to utilize at any time to provide feedback, ask questions, or advocate for support on how these accommodations are working in the classroom to create consistent communication for every single student's plan. I've also taken the time to monitor 504 students' grades on a more frequent basis. If a student is failing, I will conduct a classroom observation and take data from an unbiased perspective to ensure accommodations are being implemented and provide support based on that. I've become a consistent member to sat and intervention meetings with other staff to intercept already existing new or suspected impairments that may require going through the 504 process. I've been told by staff members from all three schools, I made these plans manageable to implement. I created consistency and follow-through meeting expectations, and I offer a fresh and informative perspective to the table. Another goal I held close to me was becoming a resource for students and parents along with the teachers. So, I consistently reinforce frequent communication with the parents. I encourage them to reach out to me with any questions or concerns, and in return, I've made myself, you know, very available and made sure they, they are involved as much as they are desired to be or as necessary. Like I said, I made myself available via email, phone call, or I even offer for them to come to the building, and I make myself available for when they are. Parents have shared with me that this has helped them understand their students' plan and allowed them to help support their student and provide consistency as well. At the end of the day, having consistent communication with teachers and parents is productive and important. But my biggest goal coming to the district was to make sure the students, the SRS, understand what their 504 plan really is. Students are actually able to use their plans until they're 23 years old, something that I highlight to families of students who are continuing their education further after they receive their high school diploma. I have even sat in on student service orientations at Westfield State AIC. I have even sat in on student service orientations at Westfield State, A I C, and Springfield College to support and ask questions for some of our graduating class of this year. Um, from beginning of my time here in October to now, I have witnessed multiple students becoming empowered by these documents that teachers are legally obligated to abide by and change their academic experience to become a more positive place for them to grow. Um, my S R S office has become a safe space for these students to know that they have someone in their corner, ready to do whatever it takes to help them be successful. I have met with every single um five oh four student in grade seven to twelve after we held their meeting to explain to them what their plan really is and what their accommodation should consist of. Um, so when a student is failing, I also meet with them after I do their classroom observation, and I ask them about their accommodations and what they notice being utilized or what they think could be utilized in a different way that may be more meaningful to them. Um, I also have made my open door policy known for the students that definitely know that. To get support, advocating for themselves, implementing their accommodations in a more preferred way, or just a quiet space to work when their symptoms start creating a barrier to focusing in the classroom. Um, both students and parents have given me their endless appreciation, gotten comfortable using me as a resource, and say I'm wonderfully positive to work with. So I'm going to continue reaching these goals and setting new ones that we can continue to honestly say our five oh four department truly does support the students to the best of our district's ability. Um, I look forward to beginning next year with these consistent expectations and even implementing some new things, such as increasing confidentiality to help train staff, navigate the plans, and our secure database. Um, once again, thank you for this opportunity. I know my family, friends, coworkers, and I are very proud to say that I've been a great attribute for revamping this new role. I'll continue to tirelessly work on molding this position into what it needs to be to support these students' access to the general curriculum and setting.
Awesome.
That's me. Any questions?
Wow.
Impressive.
Particularly impressed by the fact that you call the kids into your office after a five oh four plan has been approved or renewed, um, and then speak frankly with them about it and what that means. I feel like that's an extra important piece that is almost always overlooked. Um, and I think that that probably goes a really long way with those kids. Hearing it from you is different from hearing it from their parents, from their teachers. Um, and I, I really applaud you on that one. That's amazing.
Thank you. Yeah, so legally, we invite them to the meeting once they're fourteen, and a lot of students choose not to go or don't get to say what they really want to because it's intimidating being with all these staff members and your parents and try to advocate for yourself on top of that. So I appreciate that time with them too, so thank you for that.
Yeah, that's, that's important because I, it, it, each student that's graduated now that was part of the five oh four program. With you starting in October, the one thing that I would hope, and you didn't experience yet this year, because you started later. The one challenge that I know that, that would, that seemed to be consistently year over year is getting the teachers at the beginning of the year to know what that five oh four plan is and implement it on day one. Because year after year, we were going to open house, which is two or three weeks later, and half of them still didn't really know what the five oh four plan was. So if you can come up with a structure that will help them implement that early on at the beginning of the year, that's going to be extremely helpful for all of these students.
So I actually worked on that because at the high school, you know how the classes switch over, so thankfully I was there when the class.
You were to ram into that.
Over in January. So what I do is I send my roster out um by grade level to every staff member because and I, there's so many need-to-know staff members, so it's easier to send them all the names and then go. I also send them step-by-step instructions on how to get to the accommodations in the database, along with telling them, you know, I'm free from this hour, please come see me if you need support navigating that. So that goes out to them as, well, in January, as soon as the grades close and they, we receive them scheduled. So that's something I'll definitely be implementing between all three schools from the beginning of the year.
Yeah, because that was always, that was always a challenge, because you always feel like you're, you're trying to play catch-up and you're, you're already three weeks in and you're behind eight.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, oh, that sounds fantastic. We were all very excited when, when this position opportunity came up. And yes, it's something that, from a structural perspective, the district has needed. Um, I'm very excited that you're in the role. You're certainly, from what your presentation is so far, we get to reach spot for you, so keep up the good work and we're, we're, we're looking forward to more presentations like this.
Oh, awesome.
You want them every month? We'll have you. Once a year will be fine. You need us for here. More presentation. All right, so policies. Uh, we got nothing on there. We got no, no policies tonight. We're gonna take a break next year. Everybody buckle up, okay? So we're gonna have whirlwind stuff here for policies. Um, all right, Superintendent Willard, action item, you're up.
Move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school year handbook changes for Woodland School recommended.
So.
Anybody got any questions on the Woodland School? I get a show of hands, approve the changes. In with the record show motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school year handbook changes for Powder Mill School recommended.
So. Second.
I'm supposed to do these separately or altogether since they're all in A?
I'm also.
Oh, okay, no, no, they're on, it's B there, it's A on here. All right. Um, any questions on uh Powder Mill? I get a show of hands to approve the change for Powder Mill. Amy, let the record show motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school year handbook changes for Southwick Regional School recommended.
So. Second.
Questions on Southwick Regional School changes? I get a show of hands to approve the motion. Amy, let the record show motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the replicable land use license agreement between the town of Southwick and the American Legion, Southwick Post Number Three Three Eight Incorporated, with consent of the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District for the term July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, recommended.
So.
All right, can you give us a little background on this one?
Yeah, this is the one that.
So they can park?
Well, no. Well, yes and no. This is one Pam, I actually need you to sign. I need, I need to abstain from this vote, so we're gonna have to do this as a roll call vote. Um, what this is, is in order for the Legion to actually hold the motocross, this little land use agreement needs to get signed off on because somehow, over the history of the creation of the parking lot back there, where they parked the cars in the back and they put the big trucks, is actually part of the school property that is leased to the town. And, and everybody that's involved, between the rec center, the school, and the town, need to sign off on them renting it for the year, which is why there's this land use agreement in there.
Um. And when they rent it to use, do they, do we get money?
Yeah, yeah. So in the contract.
Yeah.
There's a financial.
Did they add something?
Oh.
Well, it was there from the one before.
The town, the town is receiving.
Oh, okay, town receives.
Town receives.
The town.
Yes.
I believe it's something in the year. Oh, there we go, fifty-two hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah.
Why does that go to the town and not the school?
Because the town owns the land.
The town owns the land.
Got it.
The town owns the entire campus.
Got it.
Some of this campus sits on this, on uh parcel that the town is leasing to, to the motocross, to the Legion to hold these events.
We used to prove it yearly, and then we went to approving it every three years.
It's interesting that we even need to approve that.
Right, I. That's hard on, because we're a, um, we're the, uh, lessy for this parcel. The town can't really do just anything with it because we have a, a stake where we're.
So we technically lease it.
Technically should receive.
Well, we're not seven percent. I like where you're heading. They're just getting a green light from us to allow this transaction to happen because technically we could, uh, we could oppose it. Um, but, and this is the reason why I have to abstain, is that if we opposed it for one reason or another, then there would be questions on whether the event could even be held. The event's not being held because of my position at the rec center, that would directly impact them being able to make revenue parking cars or not. So I actually called lawyer of the day at the, the state, walked them through this, he says, yeah, this definitely causation sort of conflict of interest, so I need to abstain from the vote. So, any other questions about this? This is a three-year, we, I assume we were just running out of a three-year?
Yes, they expire, yeah.
So just out of curiosity, about how much is the rec center making?
Uh, for the motocross on a good year, close to twenty thousand dollars for the day.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
It used to be done here by different organizations, and it, it just got, um.
I remember.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
It's great to be able to pass it over to the rec center, which is right there, who helps out our kids, or like an extension of our after-school, so it's nice to be able to.
Like the last year, last year was down, obviously, because it was, they had it last year.
I think they did.
Yeah, the last one, yeah, it was down, obviously, but it was COVID, but I mean, we, now we normally just, we'll, we'll make seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand dollars just parking cars at the baseball fields, soccer field, and our parking lot. Now the rec center, what they'll do, and they have a whole, if you've ever come in there and seen, there's a whole system of who we move, when we park them, I mean, it's, it's really smooth. We're gonna, we'll come up with something here to get the cars on this side too. It's gonna be a win-win, so. Right, all right, we need to take a roll call vote for this one. Um, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
And Rob's abstaining, so the motion passes five zero one.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District and the Southwick Town and Granville Clerical Unit, which outlines the terms related to carryover vacation time for Suzanne O'Malley, recommended.
So.
Any questions on the M L A? I get a show of hands to approve the motion. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the following wage increases for non-contract employees for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Mecca Coordinator, Charlene Diaz, three percent. Treasurer, Paul Pettit, three percent. Speech and language pathology assistant, Amy Baroso, to be the same as the bachelor step one of teacher salary. E S L teaching assistant, new wage will be eighteen dollars an hour, recommended.
So.
Any questions? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Amy, let the record show motion passes six zero zero.
Be it resolved that the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee hereby extends its congratulations to Eugenia Rigby in recognition of ten years of teaching excellence. We hereby convey our sincere appreciation for your valuable efforts, dedicated service, and assistance rendered, which has enhanced the image of the Southwick Town and Granville Regional Schools. And a record of these resolutions shall be permanently entered into the minutes of this school district, recommended.
So. She retiring?
Another one, so is this a record this year? We seem to have a whole bunch of motions for this, this year.
Oh, no.
No?
No.
Not a record, okay.
No, 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 no.
Okay, well, let's have a motion, uh, show of hands to approve the motion. And the motion passes six zero zero. All right. Superintendent Willard, you're up again.
I just have, um, one thing that yearly I have to share with the school committee as part of the wellness. Uh, Jenny Sullivan sent it to the school committee, the health advisory. Met quarterly throughout the school year via Zoom. In our November meeting, we reviewed the district wellness program policy and set goals related to our students and faculty's health and wellbeing. In subsequent meetings, we reviewed our progress toward these goals. Attached, please find the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two annual progress report for your review. It's attached. Um, and this is part of, um, something we have to do yearly is, is when, uh, the that Little Bridge, uh, had an annual review a few years ago, and one of the things we have to do is bring, uh, the goals of the wellness committee with an update to the school committee as part of our minutes. So that is, this is kind of like checking a box to, to let the school committee be aware of that, that this wellness committee actually has goals and the actions that they've. So I just want to make sure that it's noted in the minutes that I presented it at school committee and, um.
We've checked that box.
We've checked that box.
Question?
Yes.
So on the progress towards goals in the section, or the, I guess, is the first.
There's the progress towards only.
Right, no, no, understood, but I guess on there, since the following community youth service agencies will be invited to submit quarterly meetings. Um, is that something new or we've always invited them and do they actually come?
The, we added some different ones this year. We, we made a list.
Yeah, we're trying to come up with people that might be willing to come. Like, we've had some up from Bay State before come and like do a presentation, but I don't think they have to stay. The old Southwick nurse used to attend our meetings. I also started new one. I'm just trying to get the community involved in our wellness.
Students used to take a wellness survey that I believe was put out by the state. I could be wrong. It is. Do we still do that? We do, we just, it's on a they don't do it every year.
Every other, every few years.
Every other, every few years we do. It's like seventh and tenth grade.
Yeah, and does that data go to the wellness committee?
It does, and we look at, we will look it over when, um, we did look it over a few years ago when we received it. But this, the progress toward goals, we brainstormed these at our last meeting, uh, trying to find different people that we thought of who could join. We could reach out to.
So are all of these new or?
Some of them.
That's all our ideas. So like, our students go to like the rec center at our school, the Boys and Girls Club also. Parisola's is new this year. Um.
She's on it.
Pathways.
Or she's the one that's.
Are, like, I know, um, Kim Sasso puts Pathways for Parents in her, um, weekly email I get.
And the Southwick and Granville library who support our kids.
Right, yeah, they also.
All right, perfect. Very good. Um, all right. Let's see. Mr. President?
Uh, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, um. Dr. Sullivan and I have been talking, she had, uh, her, she and her staff have been identifying some surplus, uh, educational materials, curriculum items that, um, we no longer have a, a use for, need for. Um. We don't have a specific policy on disposal of, of those items, but, uh, we did go through a process. So they, they looked at, uh, these items to determine whether they met Desi's new standards in terms of, uh, high-quality instructional materials. They do not. Um, we did reach out to some other districts. There's net, there's really no interest on the part of other districts because stuff doesn't, they can't really use it. Um, we, uh, she did go as far as looking at some organizations that would accept donated textbooks and for the materials. The problem is there's a cost associated with that.
Right.
Uh, for us to get it shipped overseas, um, in third world countries, so forth. So, um, our, do you have a couple of vendors who are coming in to take a look, get selected, we grab some things that they would like? Say we'll pay a fee. Beyond that, we're gonna dispose of, of the rest of it. So just kind of getting that out there, disclosing in case anybody, but hey, they're throwing.
Is there a homeschool, like, community that would be interested in, in that?
Well, certainly, most. It feels like they should be made available to the.
That's what I'm thinking.
We'll make them available to anybody who has an, an interest, um.
I can, I can reach out if I have some leads.
Touch base with your local, I'll let them know, but I'll have them. Okay, yeah, why don't you do that?
Or, I mean, I guess here's the thing, we know all the kids that are homeschooled in the district. Can we send them out a, an email notifying them that we have some material?
Emails in.
I can send a letter.
Do you have, we don't have their emails, so.
No, I don't have an email for it. We can send a letter and post it.
So when they send, I mean, is that, like, would.
I don't, I don't think that's.
Emails for them? No, 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 understood. So there's an option for them to get, and they just choose not to?
The homeschool thing is usually self-contained.
Oh, no, absolutely. So.
If we're interested.
Looking, I, I just want to back up one quick second. You said that Jenny looked at sending them overseas.
All right.
Yes. What, what's the fee? I mean, is this like, are we talking thousands of dollars to send them overseas or is it something?
Could be, yeah.
They're heavy.
Yeah.
Go look at the hallway out there. It's, they're lined all the way down the hallway. A lot of them are holdout dated workbooks that were included. I mean, I, I'm all for just tossing them, but my thought was do a walkthrough and invite homeschooling students to come through and walk through.
Yeah, when do we have to have a? Yeah, when do we have to have them gone by? Um.
Before they do the floors.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, saying like you can get two weeks notice.
It's it's something we don't, yeah, we want to turn around fairly quickly. So you know, something that could be done by early July.
Okay, so.
When we have the camp, we don't want people in when we have the camp.
We can do it.
When's the camp?
Next week.
Yeah, stop.
So.
Yeah, but we'd have to have time to do it. I think we should know by everybody, homeschool families, district families.
Just wondering.
Well, the concern, so what Jenny's Jenny's concern is we don't want to put these materials in the hands. The 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 concepts, the the manner in which some of the lessons are developed and 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 shown demonstrated in the in the books is not consistent with the practices and the methodologies. So.
Right, it's 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 putting on.
It's going to be counterproductive to put it in in the hands of our own of the families that are part of the district. Um, to the extent that you want to make them available to families who aren't part of the district or other organizations. You know, we made a, we made a good faith effort to try to place these things with other districts or with.
Yeah.
Um, other organizations that could could make some use of them.
So if I made a couple, I'm just wondering whether, like, I know some people that work at like UPS. Me, I know, I'm wondering whether they reach out to their corporate entity and say, hey, I mean.
The thing is, though, like I understand what you're saying. This is this is not best educational practice materials anymore.
But no, I think it's more a shipwreck like could we get?
No, but it might be best, it might be better than what they've got where they could be sent overseas.
Could we get a.
That's what I'm like, if certainly seems like there's a tax. Like if we like if we, well, no, I know, but that's going to be minutes coming, pennies on the dollar.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering whether like whether it's a UPS.
There's a lot, there's a lot of work involved.
Court breaks or we say, hey, you know what? Fine, we'll. Hundred.
And where were they located prior to?
In a large uh.
How old are they? Are these laws disposed of? Are we talking shredding or? Big bonfire in the back.
Anywhere from the mid eighties up through up through um more more much more current stuff. Um, we've been born in two thousand fifteen.
Oh.
Yeah. That would be the that would be the newest newest stuff.
No.
All right. So basically bonfire at the school.
With the fire.
Yeah, we we do have at least one vendor um who will pay us for anything that they deem usable that that they will come in and they'll resell it, they'll distribute it. So um that's happening over the next. Couple of weeks, but they may only take a fraction of what we have.
Bring us a fifty cent check or something.
Yeah, it might be a few hundred dollars.
Hey.
Um.
So you can send one book across the ocean.
There's so do we want to explore the the homeschool?
I I do.
I don't.
From nineteen eighty.
I will, though, well, yeah, I mean, there's this, there's a fair amount of this stuff that's two thousand fifteen, two thousand twelve, two thousand eight.
I mean, that's ten.
Almost ten years old. Two thousand years old.
I don't, it doesn't sound like it's worth it. I don't think there's.
Uh, the homeschools have to.
They do.
They generally do. I mean, they're all like.
And this is not like, this is like placements for math. So they don't have the whole, they would have a component of a map or anything. It's like the workbook piece. It's that.
So it's like getting a test, but not the entry key.
It's like getting the test without.
All the tests.
All the material that you study for for the test.
Test.
Yes.
Do you read that? All right.
So I wanted to make you aware of that. Um, this case, anybody was concerned that we're throwing out valuable educational materials. Um, and I uh I also just wanted to mention the Woodland Sidewalk Project is set to commence on Monday, July eleventh. We we met with the engineer from Time Bond and a representative probably uh constructing company. Job. So that's the.
And what is that project? So you're replacing the sidewalk?
Replacing all of the damaged, broken up sidewalk that runs really the length of uh the southern side of Woodland School and actually extending a little bit into some area where we have some asphalt presently that will get turned into concrete. So it'll be compliant with all the ADA.
We've been talking about that for like three, four years. That's oh, this is the first time I talked about it this year because we haven't heard it. So I'm like, okay, cool. Or at least it's come up in discussions for a long time.
That's why I've been talking about it.
Three years, yeah.
All right, anything else?
Uh.
One about the prince.
So.
Oh, oh, yeah. Good idea. Um, so we will be continuing to process payments both to our employees and to vendors and other entities, agencies, organizations. So um I don't know if you what the committee feels about signing those those warrant documents. If uh try to do something electronically. I'll give them your personal cell phone and direct them to.
Committee voted to not pay it. Uh, no, I mean.
I think.
I don't mind stopping.
Yeah, I have no problem. I'm literally a mile away. I have no problem if you guys let me know that there's things that need to be signed.
We emailed it during covid.
Yeah.
The question I always had with that was how how much of a pain in the butt was that for you?
It's not that, well, it's not that hard. I just collect them and.
The the concept of, yeah, so so were they getting um actual, did they get any of the detailed reports showing what what was being spent or are they just getting a signature page?
No, we have the whole thing. Yeah, we have the whole thing.
All right, can you authorize rubber stamps for us?
You could, I I can do it either way. I have my signature.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
And I'll be traveling books this summer, so that's easiest.
Yeah, okay. So we try to e- the email.
Four kids in here.
All right.
I just always wondered after I signed them, like, then you have to like compile, we seem back together with like.
Not that hard.
So if if you wanted to look at the the supporting documentation for those reports, so there was an expenditure using, what is this about? I don't understand. Those things are available for review here. They're they're always available for you.
It's funny how all the bills in the summer are a lot higher.
They're watering the next.
No, I know. All right, so we we're good. We'll just do that. We'll try it electronically. If it doesn't work, there's at least one or five.
Return back.
That's what we need for to make it legal. So.
Yeah.
In summer hours, the office closes an hour earlier. So just if you're coming in to sign or coming to visit us, they close at three o'clock because the custodians don't work the night shift. So.
So what time do you come in?
What time? They come in at seven thirty. I don't know. But I think the office hours are eight to three in the summer, the public office.
Here.
Yeah.
Did you really not even open any, right?
Uh, the other school offices are open. We have full time to learn.
Oh, that's right, that's true.
Yeah, I guess. They clock twelve four.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I got you. All right, super. Okay, on to some committees. Finance. Or negotiation. You got no new updates?
Are we done with the contract?
No, we had a postponed it due to a health issue by somebody on the negotiating committee.
So it's just on a contract yet?
I know.
Where do you anticipate that will be one before the start of the school year or?
No, they don't want to meet.
Oh, no, that's cool. Okay, so this last meeting we were going to have, they were going to tell us they don't want.
No, no, they would didn't want to meet over the summer.
Oh, oh, I got you. Okay.
So they're going to start the school year bad.
Which just means that their old one is still.
Is that is that abnormal?
This is this is not what has been done before.
After the last time.
Certainly.
Same, right?
Yeah, it's happened a couple of times, yeah.
I was just wondering from the teachers, from the teacher perspective, is that is that happen? All right, that's good. Finance, we are, we might have a meeting over the summer, right? Depending on if that gentleman gets back to us on the grounds sort of proposals.
Yeah, I traded some emails. I have.
If we can get ahold of that, the uh.
Yeah.
The contractor.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Yeah, so we may have a meeting over the summer. Um. The collaborative for the Ericson here, but we had the last meeting here last week. We signed all the warrants for leases for the next five years. I did get answers. Um. As Steve suggested, I would as to why the answer, where they are, they're basically debt service. That's it. There's no added margins put in there, whatever the lease is, is what covered the debt service on the property for that year. Uh, which means that as this thing goes on, some of them will go away because they'll own the land. But obviously, then they do improvements or improvements under it, change that around. Um, I do know they were having their annual meeting after our organs, but the corporation meeting. Um, I don't know how that went. I know Erica brought up last time. They were they were somebody who was on it. So looking to try to fill that role. Um, policy.
We have not met since our previous meeting. The last um last meeting was the last meeting of the year. So no new updates since last time.
For policy?
Or not policy. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, you were correct.
I was in I L T. Sorry.
I L T, yeah.
That was for I L T. Sorry. Policy, we met today.
Yeah.
And we um revised the unpaid unpaid meal charge policy to be in compliance with the law. So and we will not, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not meeting again until September when we launch with master.
Yeah, we're coming in with vengeance next year. So everybody, this will be Liz is excited. I think that'll be, she'll be able to shepherd us through this. I think we'll uh.
It'll be great.
We look at this, I mean, I I know we're probably the three of us that are on here, we just potentially increase the if we can to get through that stuff. I mean, these policies, desperate need to get through this on.
All the Saturdays, Sundays?
No, 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 I don't think we need to do that, but. We need to do Saturdays. Uh, building to grounds.
They're going to be starting to empty the classrooms, moving stuff around and.
Putting aside walking.
No, they don't do anything aside from. This is all internal stuff.
Oh, very cool. Um, I L T.
Yeah, now now go back to my previous.
All right, wellness, we had an update tonight. Uh, sped.
We heard our update as well, yeah.
I don't want to pressure, but I mean, technology, do we have a technology update?
There is no update.
Okay, well, that's that. I mean, there was so many updates this year that I mean, I'm just.
Is Garland, does Garland begin on August first?
Very cool. So I know everybody's excited to have him on board. So that's great. Uh, capital committee. Done for the year.
All done.
All done. All done forever? All done for the year?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
All right, master plan.
Uh, nothing new since last.
Okay. Athletics, uh, might touch base with Joe just to find out when are new, the announcement went out last week uh that we assigned our new athletic director. Uh, I think he's coming in tomorrow or Thursday. I'm hoping that I saw him on resume. I didn't get a chance to meet him in person, so I'm hoping to get an introduction this week and then Joe and I and the athletic director probably set up monthly quarterly type meetings that should be important because we went through this rounds issue with finance too. So it'll be important to get his feedback on that. And my understanding is is that he was significantly evolved with the um grounds improvement over his previous employment. Um, so he may be able to be very helpful throughout this.
And will we bring him into school committee um next year to meet him?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, he's from my understanding, he's very excited to be moving into this role. So two very good additions. Legislative liaison, I know we were talking about this earlier. Um, if anybody wants to go to this, um, it means we've got a couple of weeks, right, before the special deal goes away. Um, just we if if we do, if you do do early signups, um, we need to make sure that we're going because once we're paid or we're in. So if we cancel last minute, we lose our, we lose our investment. That's it for those. Public comments, if there's nobody here, there's no public comment. Um, anything for old business? New business, we've got, we have some meetings?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know, we've got summer meetings. Yes, we need to do retreat. Um. How do we know? How do we do that? Amy, do you send out that little emails to when people are available? Or I know we tried to, we did that last year, what, second, third week of August?
Yeah, we can try that. I don't know. If people can send me vacation schedules and then I can try to work around.
Okay. Are we able to utilize services somewhere?
How and how much you going to pay me?
I'm saying we could do Pioneer Valley indoor karting and we. Here we go. So we we raise uh the owner is a family friend. We can get a good discount.
Yes.
Then I'd say maybe.
They got a meeting or what?
That is very uh.
Joe's Pizza North Hampton after possibly.
Okay, now we gotta remember that the meeting itself is public. So we've got.
We're available.
We're we're available. All right.
They 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 have a party where they're probably there. So it's.
That would be, is there a rule as to where we need to do this? As long as it's public.
I mean, my racing name is Big Daddy Joe.
I have to, the meeting, a public meeting have to be inside the distance.
Can you fit into one of those?
Oh, yeah.
That's a good question.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, as Ross.
That'd be so bad. Big team building strategy.
All right, we need to find out if it can be in the just.
Yeah, we could do workshop.
But I mean, we can't do any business.
Well, that's fine. It doesn't sound like Joe wants to do any business.
We can do team like team bonding.
This could get some.
We did that the last time. We played some game. I remember I got I'm in a.
No, I know. I I got I got my resource. I can pull together some of those ones. All right, if we can combine it, that would be awesome. So we could have like, uh, because I, Mr. President, well, yeah, Mr. President can show us his deaf karting skills.
He's got a Portugal.
All right.
I may not want to risk injury. It's a big old car when you're on it.
Are you going later?
Racing.
Oh, yeah, we don't want to Portuguese Grand Prix. I don't know when that is with David.
I mean, I'm gonna have to jump in with my kid's go kart and see if I can.
Here we go. No practicing. You know, they'll practice on the summer.
Oh, hanging around is totally different, totally different.
Oh, no, she may have one.
I have go karts.
No, you see what you have or she may have go karts.
Working for the crossing. I know I got go karts. I got quads. I got dirt bikes of all different sizes. I kick butt.
Legging. Okay, well, stay tuned for that. Amy likes that little line. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn for the last time this fiscal year.
Second.
Can I get a show of hands to uh? End the meeting. Meeting is ended. Motion passes six zero zero. We have a fantastic summer.